Call this meeting in order, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Introduce Jessica.
Well, we have, uh, Mark, as you can see, is not here tonight. Jessica's gonna be sitting in.
Jessica McHale, who's a partner in the firm and the city attorney for Herculean currently and formerly with De Soto.
Very good. We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan. Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Wolfen.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. They're taking a motion or approval of the agenda?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us down to personal appearances, Ms. Jeanette.
First of all, I want to thank you for letting me come before you. Again, it's our annual 4th of July.
Jeanette, you need to state who you are.
Come on.
Well, if the people watching on television don't know who you are.
Okay. My name is Jeanette Wood and I'm the administrator at River View in St. Genevieve. And you know, we have a annual 4th of July party, and again, we're doing it this year, and part of that party is having fireworks. And so, since we're in the city limits, I'm here to ask permission if that's okay to do.
This is on the 4th?
No, it's gonna be July 2nd, which is a Tuesday. No, 3rd, 3rd, I'm sorry. It's on Tuesday.
Now.
I have to look at the...
Tuesday is the 2nd.
The 2nd is... It's the 2nd.
Okay.
So that's when it's gonna be, July the 2nd?
Yes.
The staging area will be across the street from the nursing home in the cornfield down the hill a bit. She's talked to the farmer who leases that field from us and has found that there's an area where the corn is not planted closer to the road where they can set up. Gary's looked at it. I went out and looked at it. The only issue, potential issue, is if we got a freak wind out from out of the north, it'd be blowing the wrong, being the wrong way. But otherwise, you know, there's no structures that would be affected by it.
Yeah, 'cause I had some concerns about the water park right there now, but talked to Gary Nelson today and he's, no concerns for him either. I know he's been out and talking.
Do we need a motion, or...
Yeah.
A motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Any more personal affairs?
Nope.
Takes us to the city administrator's report.
Okay. Uh, we opened the bids for Chadwell Lane. I'd like to report that they came in lower than I had expected. Details, however, we will discuss in closed session because there were some irregularities that arose that we need to kind of decide how to proceed. And so, I couldn't, I couldn't put it on the agenda for approval tonight. We need to discuss that, make a decision. And I'll put it on the agenda after you've made your decision. Piva sent in their regular rent check instead of the new rent check. I called it his attention and he apologized and said, "We're gonna sign the agreement and we'll send in our payment next month." That will be the amount, the additional amount that wasn't on this month's rent plus the payment for July to get them, to get them going. And his explanation was they are very busy, which is not a bad thing. I've been informing you off and on about the lawsuit with McAteer's over sewer damage. We did a tender mediation. It was settled. I'll inform you of the terms in closed session 'cause I signed a pledge of confidentiality. Brian can talk about community television when we get to committee reports. We had a meeting. Copron sent us a proposal for doing the construction services and inspections on Chadwell Lane when we proceed. Mark had commented earlier in an agreement with them that we had that he didn't like, there was kind of this limited liability provision in their standard portions of their agreements, and we eliminated it in our prior agreements, but the guy who prepared this one didn't know about that. So, I responded, "He's gonna eliminate it and we'll, we'll be back with an agreement that doesn't limit their liability." The, still waiting to hear from the county regarding the issue of the court transfer and collection of special tax bills, so we can answer their questions when we, when we get to correspondence.
So what's the, what's the whole, what are the questions we're waiting for?
I mean, as far as the tax bills, do we have, do we have an ordinance?
Yes.
That we feel is, we, can we hand them the ordinance and let the attorneys discuss? I mean...
I haven't, I, I met with them, I think I've discussed this with you before, and there were a series of questions that were being asked. One of the questions was whether a bill that was passed in 2018, which established limits on how cities can collect fines and fees, applies to the work that we do when we, when we mitigate a public nuisance. And, and since it's a legal question, I asked them to submit it in writing so I could get a legal opinion. I haven't gotten that yet, although I understand that the county commission has questions about the cost involved, and I haven't received any specific question from them either. So, I'd like to get their questions in writing with sufficient detail that we can respond.
Sure, we're waiting on them.
We've got two parties who are considering, or like to consider purchasing property on Progress Parkway. We've been talking about that. And so, it's kind of, one needs to decide first and the other one will maybe make a decision, but you know, I think both parties are interested in pursuing it. I told the Corps of Engineers that we weren't interested in proceeding with any more core work and I haven't heard anything back from them yet. There's a retaining wall on North Fifth Street, just west of Washington, on Washington, at North Fifth Street, and, west of Fifth Street. And it, it's been there a long time. One citizen told me it was built 63 years ago, but it's shifted. And they wanted us to consider repairing it. Should it fail, it would jeopardize Washington. It's right across the street from the Academy. However, it's not clear to me it's on city property. And nobody seems to know where the property corners are. So, the mayor authorized me to employ a surveyor to find the property corners so we can proceed with informed, with full information on, on that. And the mayor wanted to discuss overlay priorities. He, remember Gary, he hasn't got the footage yet, had told you that he would provide you with the roads that he thought were the highest priority. Cedar Lane for the full length. Fourth Street from State Maintenance to Washington, that's a stretch here. Sarafin. And third, from Merchant to Jefferson.
Third from where, Mark?
Merchant to Jefferson. So without, you know, we'll take some measurements and cost it out, but, but just in terms of priority, are those the streets you want us to investigate, or do you have other, other ideas of them?
Crazy, and I, I had visited two homeowners on Cedar Street. One of them was a elderly man that was out on the street and fell due to the disrepair of the street, and everything worked out well with him, but, and then there was another man that lives on that street. And I, and on the other end of that, we did park, which was a good connector, and I, you can never do enough streets, but we only have limited funds, so I thought, my thinking is, is at least get, do connector streets, you know, we'd have on each end, we'd have good, good asphalt on each end of the subdivision, which gets a lot of traffic, and if it's a hazard, and that street, if you go back on that Cedar, it was one of those chip and seal streets and it's, it's coming apart. I do have some concerns, I've talked to Gary about this, about what happens if we don't want asphalt over something that's loose, 'cause there's loose stuff all over the street.
Contractor will remove any unsuitable base material.
Oh, that's a big project, that Cedar Street. It's a long street. And I, with the monies, we might not be able to afford to do the whole thing, but maybe we can start in the back of the subdivision and come up, come up to Cherry Street or one of the other streets and then do something next year to finish it up. I don't know, but that's, that's a priority, I think, should be a priority for us. And I know we done a big street project in that, in that ward, but it's a busy, they're busy streets. You know, they're all busy, so...
Okay. Well, without further direction, then Gary will start taking measurements and will consult with saving contractors and come back to you with a, an order of magnitude on the dollar amount, which you know, know exactly what it's gonna be.
Any questions? Takes us to staff reports, Eric.
Good evening again. Evening, Chief.
I don't have a whole lot to report. Have you seen there Officer Griffin Ryan resign?
In terms of karaoke a little bit. He's been in accounting classes for the last few years, so he's finally finished that and has been pursuing a career in, in accounting. So luckily for him, he was, he was pleased to get a job offer in accounting, and so he's moving on. He's been a dedicated valuable employee. We were able to rehire one of, in my opinion, one of the better officers we've ever had, Kyle Weiss, came back. He started actually yesterday, so just a quick refresher. So that's two, two substantially competent officers that we were able to rehire, which I'm really, really pleased with. So, I feel really good about everything. The staff's doing well, so I don't know that I have, have too much to report unless anybody has any questions.
I'm just curious, didn't he have another job in counseling, like fire department?
Griffin?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, he was a member of the fire department. I don't know if he's resigned that or not. I know he moved, he moved out of the, out of the city.
Oh, did he?
I don't know if he...
I was just curious.
He is actually gonna stay on as a reserve for us, help do, do the festivals and, and whatnot, so I mean, it's definitely in, in good terms and, and you know, we're sad to see him go, but we're happy that he's, that he's kind of pursuing something that he's interested in, so he's done a good job for us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Steve Wilson?
Evening, everyone. Just touch on base, what have we been doing this week? My staff's been flushing hydrants. They're gonna continue to do this through the week, and if there's, if it's not completed by the end of this week, we'll finish the first part of the next week. So, just to give everybody an update on that. I also received quite a few calls wondering if we are using the new water tower on Progress Parkway. We are using the new water tower. We completed the installation of the new water line up to the tower. It's tied to the system. We've been using it for, for a few weeks now. Water Park was able to fill their pools off of the pressure from the tower and the water out of the tower with no issues. So the water tower is in use and has been for a few weeks.
Well, you know, you got a fence going in around it, puts projection on the landscaping up there to finish where we put the water line in and puddle it and stuff like that.
Yeah, there's some puddling at the bottom, a little bit of finished grade.
I know it's been a while, so...
Yeah, that's, that's been the hang up there. The fence should be installed.
We, we got a second reading on that tonight.
Yeah, more fence set, as long as it was passed, then we would, they would be ready to move sometime after the 4th of July. So, and once, once the fence goes in, then we'll, we'll bring everything to finished grade.
You got the skated system?
The skated system, you got, the skated system was approved and has been ordered.
Oh, no average yet.
It looks like later in, in July. We will be operating off pressure gauges and manual switches until then. U V system at the wastewater treatment plant has also been ordered. Site representative's supposed to come out next week, do some final measurements, and this unit will be manufactured.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Sandra.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You have my report in front of you. I wanted to start out with the big news, and that is that the month of May felt really busy, and that's because it was really busy. We had over 3,500 visitors through the Welcome Center, averaging it out over the course of 31 days. That's actually over 115 visitors per day. Now, actually, some days were much higher than that and some days weren't that low or weren't that high. But when you think about that and you think about City Hall and how many people come through here in a day, we're doing this with one person at the desk and me in the back running out to help out whenever I need to. So, it was our busiest May out of the last six years. And May is always the busiest month the last few years because all the teachers are trying to get their school field trips in. We actually had a couple of field trips that had to be rescheduled from earlier in the year due to rain or other weather issues, so it was just a really crazy month in May. So that includes leisure travelers as well as group tours. And I thought you might also like to know that for our largest out-of-state markets, this is based on guest registry responses. Not every guest that comes in wants to sign the registry and tell us what their name is and where they're from, but approximately 30% do. And so it's a good cross-reference of the types of people, you know, that are coming through. But the largest out-of-state areas were guests from Illinois, Iowa, and Wisconsin in the period between January and May 2019. And our largest in-state, 'cause we separate the data both ways, our largest in-state market in that same period was the St. Louis metro area. No surprise there, but I just like the data and think it's interesting. We had a travel writer in last week from U.S. News Magazine, and they're targeting for this fall to have a, to have an article about the National Park coming to St. Genevieve. And so we're going to try to time that, so it's about 30 days before the park opening for maximum impact. Because of that, Tim Good...
That's News?
I'm sorry?
The name of the magazine?
Yeah.
Travel Writer.
USA Today. So, so Tim Good was in town for that, and he gave a nice interview, and we had a chance to catch up on some other things, and I'm always pushing him for a date, and the target date of establishment is still this fall. Everybody's talking about the impact of flooding and excessive rains, despite the fact that our June numbers have been down across the board. We did have an excellent turnout for the French Heritage Festival on June 8th, despite having the, the Down Syndrome event on the same day. Maybe it even helped each other, but we had a really good turnout. And also despite the fact that we were cut off from about half of our market since every bridge and the ferry within any reasonable driving distance was closed at the time. So we were very pleased about that. The event organizers are very pleased. We hosted the director of the Consular Office of Quebec here in St. Genevieve for the French Heritage Festival. The mayor presented a key to the city, to this gentleman, and he and his colleagues were just bowled over by St. Genevieve. They just loved it, they want to come back here. We're talking to them because Quebec City, about an hour outside of Quebec City and what's actually now become a suburb of Quebec, is the little area that many of the people that founded St. Genevieve came from. And so, we're talking with these consular representatives about helping us maybe form a sister city liaison with this area in Quebec where a lot of the St. Genevieve founders were from. So we hope to continue a dialogue in that way. This weekend was going to be the Chalk Art Festival, sponsored by 573 Magazine and co-sponsored with St. Genevieve Tourism and the St. Genevieve Art Guild. Because last weekend, when they made the decision, the long-range weather forecast was three little storm clouds with lightning bolts coming out of them, they made the decision, I think it was wise at the time, because people were not going to make plans to come to St. Genevieve with their kids for a chalk art festival with lightning bolts in the sky. So, they did decide to postpone that to Saturday, July 27th. So, the last time that this event was held in St. Genevieve was 2010. If the river permits, we will have our first visit by the American Queen Riverboat passengers on July 6th. As you know, they get off at Chester and they take a bus to come over here for the deluxe tour to St. Genevieve, and we certainly hope they'll be able to keep this date. As you've seen in the paper, we're hoping that the water park will be able to open on their scheduled timeframe around the 8th to the 10th of, of July. I've been working with Brad Arnold and the other management staff out at the water park to offer any support that I can. We'll probably have an opportunity to go out and train their new staff. They're hiring lots of new staff for the water park, and that includes, like, entry staff. So we're going to train them about how to give directions, information about St. Genevieve kind of across the board, because since they're so far out there on Highway 32, that could be the first place that people would see and would interact with St. Genevieve. And so when, you know what it is, these are a lot of high school students, so they may not really be used to giving directions. So we want to kind of have a consistent spiel to offer to them. And then I've just put some dates on there for the aldermen to note. Of course, this Friday night is the Fourth Friday Art Walk. You know about the July 4th activities that are planned. And on July 10th is Moonlight Madness, sponsored by Downtown St. Jen. And this is a, like a Christmas in July with specials or just fun, that the shops stay open late, and it's a good shopping event, so it's a good shop, small opportunity. Any questions? Yes?
Sandra, does, does local business ever approach you for the, some of the metrics that you mentioned?
Oh, yes.
Where people are coming from?
Quite typically. And that was one other thing that I didn't point out. We do have a couple of new businesses that are actively, well, one last month that opened up and one that's about to open up in the downtown area. One that had been primarily a, an internet sales model, and now they're going to open a retail storefront and expand their product offerings. So, that's a little bit the reverse of what often happens. A lot of times it starts as a brick and mortar and ads on internet, so... But to answer your question, yes.
So with those metrics you gather, I mean, you could customize a report for them, if they requested that?
Right, if they want it for their loan documentation or something like that. Frequently, it's just that they're putting their business plan together and they just want to have some idea of how many people come through and, you know, if it's been growing or shrinking or whatever. So, I usually spend as much time as they need to, just to give them some help over the phone and any follow-up that they need. All right? Thank you.
Committee reports.
What was it needed reported on?
They don't have to report anything.
Well, I did. No, we, I mean, we had a meeting this Tuesday. I mean, we really didn't have anything substantial come up. Debated whether or not a camera was, was necessary, and that was about it. Pretty much came up with, I would say, no for now, unless we have one that is getting ready to go out, goes out, we should be fine until then. So, nothing too substantial. Point out that we have an educated videographer on the board. Brian's learned how to operate the cameras and is volunteering to go take video. I mess the school board meetings up every single month, so very good job.
Oh, boy.
Scary.
Wouldn't we take volunteers if they want to become videographers?
Yeah, yeah, actually, that'd be a good, good thing to state on TV. I mean, we're always looking for volunteers, so if anybody wants to help, feel free to come out and help. We have plenty of things around the community that we could, we can take. You know, we just don't stick to municipal stuff. We go out in the county, we, we try to do, obviously, the fair's a big thing, we're gonna have some stuff set up at the fair. For sure, we're gonna get the derby and a few other events out there, so, but any help is, is needed, so we, we accept everybody.
Yeah.
I think you maybe ought to just talk about the discussion that's going on for sponsorship for individual program.
Yeah, okay, that's a good point. Well, we didn't really get too far with it, but basically, we discuss other avenues of, of revenue that we're kind of missing out on. Obviously, we got our utility fees coming in that pretty much supports the TV department, the access television department. But we're looking at other ways of being able to, to basically monetize, like we're on YouTube. We don't have enough subscribers to become monetized, but that doesn't mean we can't put out sponsorships to, for instance, sponsor the TV, or the board, the board, the alderman meetings, or, or the demo derby coming up for the fair, or, you know, really anything that we have, school board meetings, we can, we can put slides on anything. So we are looking for sponsorship or donations or anything that would help, help basically fund more, more options for the TV station. It's something that we're working on. We're hoping to, in the next couple of months, be able to go out to some businesses and, and search for some sponsorship opportunities, so that will be coming soon.
Well, one thing to point out, you can get on the internet and get it for free, basically.
Yeah, yeah, so basically, we're only offered right now on our, our local stations, 991, 990, and is it Channel 7 maybe still? Or no, 990, I thought it was 990, 991, I couldn't remember.
Yes, that's correct.
So those are the only opportunities or avenues that, that cable-wise, that we're able to, to provide services for. So if you have Dish, or, you know, any kind of satellite internet, which I would say a majority, or, or just streaming services that a majority of people have nowadays, you're not gonna see our stuff on TV. But we do offer other avenues such as YouTube, so, you know, internet services that you can go online. There's also our website that we, you can usually find most of our videos on, which are just basically linked to YouTube. And like I said, the downside of it is we're losing some funding because of the way society is heading towards, not cable, basically. There's not, not as many people are getting TV anymore. They're, they're leaning towards online services, streaming, YouTube, or, you know, you got the Roku and all that, all that Amazon Prime stuff that is out there now. So, to try to recoup some potentially falling utility fees, we're, we're trying to come up with our own self-funding avenue, and one way to do that, since we're not gonna end up getting enough subscribers on YouTube to become monetized through YouTube, we can set up our own sponsorship program. So that's essentially what we're doing, and, or what we're trying to do and looking into in its new, new direction that we're... It's been explored before, but not quite to the extent, I believe, of what we're doing now. So, it's, like I said, hopefully we could, local businesses shall be seeing us over the next couple, couple of months, and it's nothing, our, our fees are gonna be very small. You know, it's not like radio ads or TV ads that are gonna be normally substantially high. They will be very small, affordable for local businesses, just to get their name out there, believe it or not. You know, there, there are actually people that watch these videos online. I know that's kind of hard to believe, these are, these are super exciting, but we're just trying to hit that audience and try to get some sponsorship opportunities.
Who would the point of contact be if persons wanted to volunteer?
I would say, you can go to our website. It's gonna give you the number to the TV station. It's gonna be Don Pritchard, it's gonna be the best way to, to, to reach, Don Pritchard, not Don Person. Don Pritchard is going to be the best person to reach out for that. Call the TV station. If he's not, and he's our direct, our TV manager, the, the TV director, if he's not in office, it's got a nice, nice little voicemail you go to, leave him a voicemail, and I can guarantee you a call, he'll call back.
The reason I ask is I once tried to tie...
The reason I ask is I once tried to tie in when I first started teaching here, and now I have a bunch of advanced students at St. Jen High that can be videographers, and I could probably tie in as part of their coursework.
Yeah.
If we get permission to do so.
Yeah.
So, and they can also help us try to design something like a Dragon TV the school has online, so we could probably help with that as well. So, I'm thinking ahead.
Yep, that'd be great. That'd be awesome.
I think he's only there from like 2:00 to 5:00.
Yeah, his hours are limited, but, or you can just call him personally.
I will. I just want to make sure it's out there.
Any other questions or comments?
Great job, man.
Thank you very much, Brian.
Good job, Brian.
That takes us to public comments, and we have a gallery full of people, so I'm sure we have somebody who has a public comment, so we'll start right on the first row. Ann Fowler, Ms. Ann?
Well, I'm gonna send my representative.
Okay, well, that'd be great.
My daughter.
Okay. May I just come up and state your name, please?
My name is Cindy Minios, and I'm actually speaking for my mother, Ann Fowler. So, now, I have no experience with this, so am I commenting or am I telling you our complaint? What am I, what is, are you responding to my complaint or how does this work?
We will, we're gonna, you're gonna be able to speak.
Okay.
You just speak to us, and I don't, there might not, there might be some questions.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and I'm sorry, I've just not done this before.
No, that's fine.
And I learned I was doing it today, so I apologize. I'm the vice president of a business brokerage firm, so I have no experience in all of this. I'll tell you that upfront. So, here is our issue. My mother owns several rental houses, like 10 or 11, something like that. And the issue that, or the problem that we're having is with the water company. And it's my understanding today that you all, I guess someone here represents the water company and how they, how their billing system and collection system works.
There's no separate company. It's the, talk to the city government.
It's you all, the city. Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know, hold on about this, so I apologize. The issue we're having is we get a renter, and right now, we have, I believe, three that get so far behind in their water bill that I guess you use their deposit first, and then they don't pay the bill for another couple of months, and they leave, and my mother is then responsible for those bills. It's my understanding from talking to mom today, that's an ordinance, and I read it right before, right after I got down here today or this evening, that you go after the renter and you go after the landlord. That's how I'm understanding it. In my experience of watching over mom's finances, probably in the last five or six years, anytime that's occurred, and it happens relatively often, nothing's done about the renter. My mom pays the bill for, or bills, a lot of times, in this case, three. So, I suppose, first of all, if this is an ordinance, can a new ordinance be written modifying this and somehow? So, I guess that's my question. Then, another issue or complaint is, for instance, right now, in this period of the last couple of months, and I call the water company, and they are, they've been very good to send us the renter's water bills so that we see how far behind they're getting. It's my understanding, when I talk to the little gals there who are always, you know, they're very helpful and very polite, that in order for the water to be shut off, the renter has to be served an eviction notice, and then the water company will turn off their water. Am I correct in that?
Not, exactly.
Okay.
When they're delinquent, say at the end of the first billing period and they don't pay, they get a notice.
Okay.
And they don't get shut off until the end of the second billing period where they haven't paid either the first month or the second month.
Okay.
So, there's about a 40, you know, there's a 60-day period there where they have an opportunity to pay for their water without being shut off.
Right, right. Well, what we're getting, you know, they may be behind two or three months. They're telling us that the water company, they're using their deposit or applying their deposit, and the water doesn't get shut off, and we end up collecting, you know, we get that bill, and mom pays those bills every time. But, and then, the strange thing that happened this time is we had that situation with two renters that I know I called on a couple, probably a month and a half ago, to say, you know, what's their water bill? I know we're, you know, they're not paying their rent. And she said, well, until you give an eviction notice, we can't turn their water off.
That's not correct.
Okay. Now, I've been told that quite a few times by the gals who answer the phone at the water office. Now, I'm in St. Louis, so.
Water office is here, and I will investigate that in the morning, but.
Okay.
I have, that is not the policy.
Okay, and I'm telling you based on my experience, and I'm calling from St. Louis. I'm not down here talking to them in person, but that's what I've been told. And now, we have another, well, my mom rents to her granddaughter, and they were, she was behind, nothing is, you know, the amount was not nearly as high, and they shut her water off, so. And we've never, you know, we don't, we never see anyone we're renting to get their water shut off. We end up paying it. And then, this little gal was, you know, probably a month and a, maybe, I'm guessing, two months, much lower water bill, and they came and turned the water off. What I guess, I'm, first of all, I guess I'm asking, is this an ordinance that can be changed? Because you have a lot of landlords in town who I'm assuming are paying a lot of delinquent water bills, because when people stop paying their rent, evidently, they also stop paying their, at least their water bill. I don't know about their other utilities. We're not responsible for that. That could run you out of business eventually. You know, it's not going to my mom, but, you know, that's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing to deal with, especially when you have that many homes. And then, what do they actually do to go after these renters? Because we've never, mom's and dad were doing this for years and years. I've been helping mom with it for, it's probably more like 11 years since dad passed. And we've never seen a renter come up with their money. We come up with that money. So, who, who's responsible for tracking those renters down? Because they created that water bill, we didn't. Who and what's, what is the procedure for tracking them down? What do you do? Do you say, well, they're gone, and here's Ann Fowler, and she'll pay? Or, because that's what it feels like.
In the ordinance and in the enabling statute, the water may be the joint responsibility of both the landlord and the tenant.
I did, I did see that.
So, if one doesn't pay, we ask the other to pay.
Right. So, do you track that other person down?
No, because it's a joint responsibility.
How did they come back?
Now, if they came back and wanted to get water serviced, we would not give it to them without compensating you.
They would not use their name.
Well.
And you would do it either.
They can't get water serviced unless they're, got an alias, but.
Okay.
Although, your mother did pose an idea, and we can talk about that, as to whether we could require some formal identification, like a driver's license. Do we have a driver's license number written down?
We get a copy of the driver's license.
Okay, we're already collecting that.
So, how about a social security number?
Yeah.
I mean, there has to be a way with those kind, that kind of information, that if somebody takes the time, which I would think they would, that they, that they don't have to, because they can just fill me, and I have to pay. But, and I know what your ordinance says, I'm sorry I wasn't here when they passed it, and I'm sorry that my alderman didn't stop to.
Is Ballard going to go up to the microphone somewhere?
I think you can hear me.
No, they can't hear you on television.
On television, they can't hear you, so. We got, you gotta walk there and just stand. It's okay.
My, my thing is, is I want to know who, I mean, what are you doing to collect these bills from the people? If you have their, if you have their social security number and their license number, if you can't track them down with our police, that if you can't track those people down, then what in the world are we going to do? I mean, I don't think it's fair to you, and I don't, and I want the aldermen to know, which I know most of you who wasn't here when these things were passed. But I understand that this has been brought up several times, and they didn't, they didn't do anything about it. So, what kind of, what kind of voice do we have as the citizens? I'm not just a landlord, I'm a citizen of this city. And I mean, I don't, I don't get to talk to my aldermen. I happen to like both of them, but I don't know who's doing the job. Are you just signing these ordinances off? Why don't you let us know? Give me, send me one of your letters that you can send up all of the people if you're having something like that. That's pitiful that that was passed without, how many landlords do we have? I called probably 60 of them this morning. And the ones I got are very upset with it, that they are like me. You know, we come before you. I've come to the, Mr. Toma, he tells me this is not his responsibility, it belongs to you aldermen. And if you can't get ahold of us, I don't, I don't belong to that bigger district, but if you're an alderman, I know you're not paid right, but you know, most of us aren't. And, but, you know, if I took on a job like that, I would be doing it. I wouldn't be just doing it for the $200 or whatever you get for a month. I would be doing it because I'm a citizen of this city. And I would love to see, that's, my thing is, is it doesn't look like we can do anything about the amendment, but I would like to see something done about the way you collect these bills. I have a $200 and something dollar bill after $100 has been taken off the bill, and I have a $200 and something dollar for one person to pay. Now, that doesn't make any sense to me as a businessperson. And I have to eat it myself whenever people leave me with a couple of months' rent due. And I sure don't appreciate having to pay for their water that must run through my pipes that must make me responsible for it. So, all I can say is what I want is some people to do their job.
Thank you, Ms. Ann.
My recollection is we thought we advertised it pretty well.
Well, where do you advertise it from?
Well, we.
Agenda, the website.
Yes.
What is it?
The newspaper we did and the, I don't think we contacted.
When that ordinance was adopted?
Yeah.
That ordinance was in the books.
For years.
Long time. Been a lot of people.
Well, I mean, when it was, when it was passed, though, I think, yeah, there was a lot of, I thought there was a lot of.
Well, you know, I wonder how many people have come back to the city and complained because they didn't know what that, that that ordinance was passed. And so, that's why I'm saying, you know what? I've got a couple aldermen. Why don't you, when you see, you know ahead of time what you're going to phone on, why don't you let us people know? I don't expect you to come to us individually, but why don't you make out a form letter and send it to the landlords when you do something like?
I don't know. Did we do that, Pam?
I, I mean, I don't know. I'd have to go back.
I thought it was pretty well advertised.
Are you saying you do or do you?
No, I was curious about when we did it, but I thought we did advertise it pretty well.
Well, not everybody watches the station.
Yeah.
And not everybody comes in the city hall, where I understand you post it. And so, let's, let the people know, that's who you're, that's who you're responsible.
Yeah. And I, that's not going to change anything. We have an ordinance that, and I, but believe me, Ann, I've dealt with this for, since I've been mayor, and I don't like it. But the problem you have is, is what you're, what we're asking is, is, and I don't mean to be any kind of disrespectful at all, but you're making a contract with these people to rent from you.
That's right.
And then, they, we can, we can go after them and try to catch up to them, and then they don't pay. And then, what happens is, is that if I'm going to have to pay the city, the city residents are going to have to pay the water bill for these properties.
Okay, now, what kind of a thing do you have whenever they come in and sign up for your water?
I don't know.
What's the question?
Well, you know, you're talking about, I rent the place to them.
Right.
And I should know what I'm doing.
No, 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 I didn't say that.
Well, it's, in the essence, that's what you meant. Now, you are selling water to these people, and why don't you have some, you know?
Background checks?
What?
Background checks?
I don't know if you want to do background checks or whatever. You guys should, should have an idea what you can do.
Well, we can, we can discuss that as the board, we could talk about that.
The board?
Well, the board, the board will have to make a decision.
I'm sure you do, but how about including us?
Well, why doesn't the committee that was recently formed discuss that?
Well, the rental housing?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we haven't got there yet.
Okay. But I think that's something that. That she should bring up with that committee and have a nice discussion, and maybe they can make a recommendation of us.
That would be a good start, is with that rental housing committee, you know?
Well, yes. I mean, that's all I want. I mean, I'm in there, but I'm, I'm not just complaining about something that doesn't, it just doesn't make sense. If I ran a business like that, I'd be worse off than I am now. You're running, you're running a water company. Amen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We got landlords on that.
Yes. Yes. And I've invited Ann's come to one of those meetings.
Okay.
Yeah. We're getting, we're just forming that because we have over 700 rental properties in the city.
Yes, you do.
And there's some guidelines that.
I called many of them today.
Yeah, I understand that, but, and we want to make sure things are right, you know, because there's some things that need to change. Maybe that's one of them, so.
So, before we move on, can I ask?
Can you go back up to the podiums, please?
Before we move on, can I ask then, what, what are we dealing with when it comes to, for now, until your committee meets and we hopefully see some change? So, someone is behind on their water. So, what do mom and I have to do to not have a three-month or two-month water bill?
We're going to continue to enforce the ordinance as it is written.
Okay.
So, in order to keep that from happening, you would need to check from month to month.
Okay, and we get the bills month to month.
Make sure your tenants paid their water bill.
Okay. And then, when they don't, what do we do? And I'm just asking, so I'm getting it from you and not your gal that answers.
Can you turn the water?
Not until, as I described, we have, they don't pay the first bill. We send them a notice.
So, first bill they get by, what does that, what happens with their deposit?
If they don't pay second bill, we, we schedule.
No, if they don't pay their fir, if they, if they don't pay their monthly bill by like this, the Wednesday after the first of the month, they're on the shut-off list.
Well, Lord, where were you when these people were running up a $300 bill?
The problem is they're a month behind. I think, yeah.
If I ran up a $300 bill in three months, I'd shut it off myself.
Okay, so that's actually what we need. That's the reason I came and left my office early, is to get a few answers. So, that's what, I need to know what's the procedure for mom and I to deal with right now in your current situation, because I don't get those same answers when I call the water office. We're saying, they're behind, their first bill come, their bill comes and they don't pay it.
So, it's 45.
So, then, the next month comes, have they gotten any kind of notice? When, when does it, when does it get shut off then? I need to know that.
I can't answer that, but what, if I were you, and if I were you, Ann, I would be calling every month, and you got, how many properties you have?
You know what? I get it in the mail.
We get their bills.
They wouldn't even send me what they are. And I have contacted them once, said it was high. They say they're going there this week and so on, but I don't have, you know, you, you know that they're still not paid. I don't know it until I get a bill.
Okay, guys, now, seriously, this part doesn't make sense to me. We do get the water bills. That I had the gal do several months back, so we know what their, we know what their bills are. But I need to know who, 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 who do I call to say, okay, they're, they're, I see they haven't paid you this month's bill?
Call the city hall.
So, we call the water company.
But there's no water company, it's city hall.
City hall, I'm sorry. I wish I was better educated on this, but I'm not. So, I call city hall, which, so then, when it, then what are you going to tell me?
They're going to answer the phone, and that's probably who you've been talking to, and you say.
I wish I was better educated on this, but I'm not. So, I call City Hall, which, so then, when it, then what are you gonna tell me?
They're gonna answer the phone, and that's probably who you've been talking to, and you say.
I have to talk to a really nice little gal, but what I'm hearing are different than what you're telling me today.
Well, I'm gonna talk about that right now, tomorrow morning.
So, what, so what are you gonna tell me? 'Cause you're in charge, right, of these girls? So, what are, what are you saying, or?
Actually, the reality is, they gotta run deep, but that's another.
Bottom line, we need to know, when are you gonna turn the water off? Like, when does the water get shut off? Can you answer that?
It gets, Anne says.
Okay.
Their bill.
Okay.
They don't pay that bill.
First bill, okay.
Then, the following.
Next month comes.
Month, two weeks into the next month.
Not even two weeks.
They, they, their, their, their water will be shut off.
Their water is shut off, for sure. We can take that to the bank, right?
Is there a notification, or is it shut off?
On the shut-off list. Would you leave me your number?
Right.
And so, I can tell you the result of my conversation.
Yes, I definitely will. All righty, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll work on it, Anne.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Who's next? Do you have anybody else for public comments?
Sure. Hi, guys. Chip Marzico. Nice to meet you guys this evening. Thank you for letting me come up and talk, and hopefully everything's doing good. On Anne's part, and I'll just bring this up because I deal with it in Perryville area, they've got actually, um, a landlord association, so that you guys don't have to deal with sixty, ninety of us. And they come up to the board and talk to you guys and discuss it and figure it all out. And I know they, down there, they look at the past water bills, and if it's, I'm just throwing out weird numbers, if it's a hundred dollar bill, the poor person that is gonna be putting deposit down pays enough for two months' rent. And of course, if it's the first month and they're delinquent, they get their water turned off, and guess what? They can't live in a house without water.
That's right.
So, they're getting evicted. So, you can tell your renter that, hey, you gotta go pay your water bill, or you're gonna be moving out, 'cause I can't pay your water bill for you.
But they, but they have to turn it off. I mean, if they're not gonna turn it off, what am I gonna do? If they go there and pay a few dollars or something, okay, evidently, and then the next thing you know, they owe a three hundred dollar bill.
Let's get back to, let's get back to the.
I just wanted to bring up, that's just an association that Perryville has, so if you guys wanna talk to the city of Perryville, they probably, the landlord association could get that lined up.
So, Anne, that's something we'll talk about the next board meeting that we have for that landlord meeting.
Landlords.
We, we should probably get a St. John's Landlord Association going, so we can contact one person, they can just send me the information, that's what I'm thinking.
That's what they do in Perryville and helps out.
That's something the landlords do.
Right. That's something I would ask you, as a landlord, to start getting together with the community of landlords and create a St. John's Landlord Association.
Sounds like you got all their numbers.
And so, if we contact you, you can contact everyone.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
I know you are.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Chip Marzico. Start over here. Uh, first off, I wanna thank you guys very much for what you guys did for us. When I say us, Leroy Willett and Sherry and Cody's here to help, uh, show our appreciation for what went on with our Spring for Down Summer event. It was a, a major, major success this past year. We brought in, thanked you guys, over thirty-five thousand dollars for our special needs, so thank you guys for that. Unfortunately, I know there was some little problems or little things and little stuff that we need to go through, and I was wanting to discuss some of them, if you guys don't mind, so we can make sure that we can keep this event going, 'cause what we do, we wanna keep available in this town to keep bringing money for our special needs. The event, I know one of the questions was, the event was changed to the eighth. Unfortunately, it's the same day as the French Heritage Days. And this next year, I'm not for sure, Ms. Christie, is it gonna be June first weekend?
Special Olympics state competition will always be the first weekend of June.
Okay, and our event's been the first weekend of June, and unfortunately, a lot of our special needs could not go to that state event that we raised money for, you know, because of that. So, we did change it. And I know a lot of people was kinda going, well, you know, who did this? Why did we do this? And oddly enough, I talked to Kathy, um, for months about this, and she was ecstatic, actually, about it, uh, whenever I said that we're gonna have it on the same day, because she thought it would actually help her event along with our event, which totally, totally agreed. And that's why we turned around and we ended up having a trolley system with our antique tractors that brought people from our event to their event and back and forth. Her son and her grandson actually came in from Chicago and spent most of the day down there enjoying the holy heck out of it. And she actually commented to me the day after the event, and was hoping that we would have it the same day next year. So, I mean, has there been communication? There's been tremendous communication.
Chip, the problem was the UTVs downtown.
Correct.
There wouldn't have been, I don't think there would have been a problem if we wouldn't have had the UTVs downtown, and that was, I think that the scheduling of the event was, I think that was smart and good, and it, you and Kathy both talked about that, but there was a problem with, and there was circumstances that, that were beyond people's, because we had flooding at the time, so I, yeah, so I, and I don't, like I say, it's.
Pass this out. And I'm not trying to definitely cause any problems.
No, we don't.
Because what I wanna do is clarify a lot of the questions or a lot of issues that was brought up, 'cause people said that we didn't talk to Kathy and we didn't schedule it, but on the twenty-second of, or twenty-ninth of May, in the paper, it actually even talks about how the UTV would be routed such that it would be going close enough to the festival so that the UTV people can actually experience that. And unfortunately, I know bad communication on our end, our start of UTVs and the grand opening there, their walk down that direction unfortunately collided. And that's one thing that we can tweak ourselves, move it forward or backwards, to get it lined up. So, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I clarify some stuff, 'cause everything I read, unfortunately, when you look at the Sun-Times, we were kinda, said bad things about us, and it was said, uh, not really bad things, but it's talking bad about the UTV people in general. And I don't want the UTV people in St. Genevieve or anywhere else to be talked down on, because I don't want anything to happen with the UTV possibility of changing the rules in St. Genevieve because of our event. And I think our event went really, really smooth. I talked to the city police, I talked to the county, had no questions, no problems, and everything went real smooth. Leroy and Sherry actually rode the route the day after to pick up signs, and I know there was mentioning about no signs. There was over ninety-plus signs.
Yeah, there was tons of signs.
Oh.
They were everywhere.
Yeah. And if you look, every one of them had directions, so everybody said they were, didn't have directions, everybody had directions. The reason for the route, I think, Mary, you brought it up in the meeting, totally, it was supposed to be going down towards Caskey. We had everything okay, but unfortunately, the flood rerouted it, uh, so we had to redo it some. You know, unfortunately, it did go through the city a little bit, but I think we actually, the way we routed it, it kinda worked out good for both. Unfortunately, the way the picture looked in the, the paper, it looked like we had a French Heritage person, it was like, what in the heck are these coming down the road? You know, so, um, there was a little bit of things there we needed to tweak. But then, you know, everybody said, well, rules, there is rules. I mean, everybody has to have a copy of insurance. Uh, when Sherry and Leroy was checking them in, there was people that actually had to get on the phone and call and get their information, because they weren't gonna be able to ride. Here's, uh, the affidavit the day after saying, saying that they're not gonna be drinking and driving. You know, there was one thing that I think one of the aldermen brought up, and there was coolers. I guarantee there was coolers, probably cooler on every one of those UTVs. But when you're going thirty-eight miles and you're going with multiple people, I guarantee you're gonna be thirsty for water, Kool-Aid, juice, snacks, and I hate to say it, but there probably was beer in there.
Yes.
But I tell you what, if, if I was gonna drink a beer, and I'm asking this, and my wife was driving the UTV, is that a no-no, or is it okay? 'Cause we tell them you can't drink and drive, and it says it in here. But is that something that's a, a major no-no, or is it not?
Yes.
It is, okay, 'cause we didn't know that.
We have an open container ordinance. There's not a state law.
Okay.
But there's an ordinance in the city limits, you can't have an open container in the.
Was that in the county, too?
No, it's not a state law. I don't think the county has any ordinances.
Right.
As long as it's not in the city, it's.
Okay. All right. So, I just wanted to clarify some of these things, 'cause, I mean, we were ecstatic, and the people in the French Heritage Festival was ecstatic about it. And then it was great before, great the day, a week after, and then like the next week, it was like, I had numerous phone calls, I had emails, and like, Chip, what'd you do? And it's like, what did we do? We didn't do nothing besides hold a tremendous event for special needs. I did get people that called up that, that said things in these events and apologized. I got emails saying that, hey, I'm sorry for bringing it up the wrong way. But after getting so much feedback, I just wanted to make sure that we all talk it out now, because if it's all right with you guys, we had ten years of Spring for Down Syndrome. This is an event that helps bring in a ton of money, and we don't wanna change something that's going great. If we need to tweak it, let's tweak it, 'cause I appreciate you guys doing, I know the city sticker thing was a, an item that was brought up, and that helps out tremendously, 'cause we had people from, that live over in Illinois, they had to go all the way up to St. Louis over and back down to come to the event. So, we got a lot of people from far away that participates in the event. So, I just wanna make sure that we, we don't jeopardize what we're doing, I guess.
Joe?
Um, just to clarify, Chip, when this was brought up, uh, the board was considering a proposal, or we were discussing whether or not the city wanted to go to a two-year permitting process to match the counties. And some points of contention were brought up among the board about, I mean, the timing of it just happened to be right after your event.
Sure.
And those, the events that were witnessed at, at your event weighed into some of the discussion there. It wasn't, I guess it wasn't brought up solely because of your event. We were discussing the permitting process, which is totally separate than what the problems that occurred during your event were. Uh, you know, we, we have a permitting issue, and we have an enforcement issue, and that's what was reiterated, but the, the newspapers or the media did not clarify that very well. I, I believe that any changes to our ordinances, nothing else was being discussed, other than the permitting going from one to two years. So, uh, I know I had a lot of people contact me, a lot of people came to where I work to discuss with me. We've never even entertained the idea of changing, uh, or disallowing or getting rid of the ordinance that allows ATVs.
That's good.
Uh, it was actually said during the meeting, the previous year, your first year that you had ATVs, there were zero complaints, zero problems. And we, the comments about the French Heritage Festival was that the reason that we probably had complaints this time is because there was another event going on, which happened to be the French Heritage Festival. And there was more people downtown to possibly see, plus the routes were changed, so it's not, the UTV situation is not under attack like some people think it's being attacked. The whole discussion started in an effort to help the ATV people in their permitting process, that they would only have to do it every two years instead of every year. So, the, the discussion was not started because of your event, the discussion was started out of the permitting process. And it kinda evolved into that.
Yeah, I appreciate the info, Joe.
I mean, and let everybody else know that the ATVs were never really under attack. It was a proposal to help them, actually, and it, it detoured into something else, but that's where we're with it.
Okay, and that's, one thing, I wanna make sure that people know that, you know, if something does change, I hope that they're not gonna all look at me and say, oh, it's all because of, uh, the Spring for Down Summer event that our, our things was changed, because, I mean, I think the UTVs in St. Genevieve and the golf carts is a, a very neat thing. I've got a lot of friends that come in from out of town that wish that they would be able to do such a thing. So, I'm hoping that you guys keep an open mind for that, and it won't jeopardize that side of it.
So, Chip, I just wanted to dovetail into what the president said. Incomplete agreement. This is not an attack on UTVs or anything of that nature. And really, what, after it was sifted through and everything kinda fell out, and talking to the tourism director, Sandra, it was like hand and glove. This event, which I, as an educator, one hundred and twenty-five percent support, um, it was the route, and it had nothing to do with the other things. I just wanna make clear, as one of the aldermen mentioned in the, in the paper, um, I have no issue with this event, I hope you know that, I hope you know me well, I hope you know that, and that it was really more about the flooding and the, the route, and nothing to do with UTVs and licensing. I wanted to go on the record for saying that.
I appreciate that, because that's one of the things that just kinda caught me wrong, that, you know, we've been upfront with you guys from day one with this Spring for Down Syndrome ten years ago, and every time it came up, you know, we always bring up the fact, even the morning of the event, I called both, uh, the chief and, uh, the sheriffs and told them what color, uh, plastic tie, I guess you'd say zip tie was on it, so they would know who's included and who's not. Uh, and the reason why we do that, multiple things, is, first off, if they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to sign all these, I make sure that they got insurance and stuff on it. If we gave the route out really early, and I'd be sitting there going, you know what? I wanna be in that thing, but I don't wanna go down and spend ten, twenty, thirty bucks, and I don't have insurance, so I'm gonna get in there. You know, that makes sure that they do come and do what they're supposed to do, and we don't wanna have that, unfortunately, you know, broadcast, say, oh, we're going down Third Street, then we're going out in fifty-five, you know, that type of thing. We wanna keep it kind of a secret until the end, and we'll let you guys know kinda what's going on. And that's what I thought we did before, we kinda forewarned that, hey, we got a hundred and thirty last year, guys be prepared, and you guys are the aldermen, we might have three hundred next year, and we, we came close to that this year. I mean, we had two hundred and.
Forty-two.
Two hundred and forty-two UTVs, and we had twenty, twenty-six Jeeps, over five hundred and forty-seven entries. So, it was a tremendous, tremendous event. So, I mean, I, I apologize that I came in and I don't, I'm not trying to jump on the wrong bandwagon, but I just wanna make sure that, you know, we all work together and, and get things lined up. So, and you know, one of the things that happened after the event, and I was trying, I was explaining to one of the aldermen here just a little bit ago, is after the event was over with, some of them did wanna go downtown, and they went to Sarah's, they went to Anvil, they went, and when they come in from out of town, you know, they got a truck with a sixteen-foot trailer or whatever with UTV on, they are gonna ride that UTV from that event to that area. I'm assuming that's okay for the day, because they are spending money in our town, which that's what we want, is to bring people to our town. If it's not, then we need to let us know, 'cause we had Built Best parking lot, we had Miss Lane's parking lot, and the city park, uh, had UTV, I mean, trailers everywhere. We had so many, which was a great thing, but, you know, they are gonna have to ride from spot to spot, so hopefully that's not a problem.
Yeah, to be back on that, that Friday night, I was downtown, and there was three of them I sat and talked to that were getting ready to go eat at, at the Autobonds, they were down for the UTV event, they were gonna spend the night here, so, yeah, that, that was just boots for this town, man.
Great.
Yeah, that was fantastic.
Very good. Does anybody else have a question? Yes?
What I hear from you, sir, is a willingness then to add some kind of, uh, bullet on this rule sheet about no open container. I mean, you're open to that?
We can put that on there, and what it'd be, if it's all right with you, we'll put, uh, city ordinance has no open container.
Right.
And then, if they're out in the county. 'Cause I, ninety-nine percent of the time, I mean, the first year, uh, that we did it, we went in town a little bit, and then, we kinda went up to city park and then went out of town. This time, we did kind of go out by the water park and then down Main Street, you know. So hopefully next year, no flood, we're going to go St. Mary's Way or go out more west and keep it more in the county.
And then you're all about lessons learned, so, I mean, education program for participants and...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's outstanding.
I mean, what we've, with all of our participants, we had no complaints on that side. And actually, it amazes me because whenever they ride the next day and they go trying to pick up their signs, you would guarantee there'd be some trash somewhere. And, I mean, it was a, I mean, a clean event. I mean, I don't think there was that much stuff left anywhere, which is great.
Thank you very much, Chip. One more?
Well, one more little thing. I just wanted to let you know that we're always looking for help for this event with our special needs. This Saturday is our one and only night game at the Challenger Baseball Field, 6:30. If you guys want to come out and see what this fund's help go to, come on out to the Challenger Baseball Field. We can and need and want buddies, and I mean buddies from little all the way up to the old. We can use as many people as we want because some of those special needs can actually hit that ball out of that facility out there. And when there's the littler ones out there, we need extra eyes to help them out.
When is that?
It's this Saturday at 6:30 at the Challenger Baseball Field. You can kind of see what this is all event is around, and you guys are probably seeing what we're doing for the coffee shop that's coming to town. Hopefully, by Jurdifett, we might have something going there that our special needs be doing some more for you guys. Okay? Thank you, guys. Appreciate you letting me talk.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else here about the UTVs? Anything to say about that?
You know what?
Don't want to get in trouble.
Okay. So anybody else, any public comments? And for public comments?
Mayor?
Yes?
Just a point of clarification, some of them might be here about the, our new ordinance, about the, so are they do it now or are they...
Yeah, now's the time.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to wait till...
Nope.
Okay, my name is Rachel Allen. I'm here because of the ordinance of the five vehicles per house or one vehicle per own I don't agree with it whatsoever. I have boys. They like to drive dirt bikes, four-wheelers. I'd rather have them doing something versus on the streets doing drugs or whatever. They ride their dirt bikes, they ride their four-wheelers in our property. And that's supposed to be considered a vehicle. Plus, I work at Mississippi Lime, so I need a different vehicle to drive to work usually. So I just, I don't agree with it whatsoever. I know that people complain constantly about vehicles in the yard or, you know, different yards, you know? I just don't, and just to let, I shouldn't even be saying it, but some people have memorial things that they hold on to, you know? For instance, which I'll probably get it, you want to stand up here by me? Okay. My husband was 17 years old and his little brother died at 13 in a car accident. We have cars because of that. And so I, he's not going to get rid of no cars, period. Either we're going to move out of town or that's the way it's going to be. I don't think it's right that people are trying to justify people of how many vehicles are trailers, anything that a person has. I understand if it's too many, yes, get it covered, whatever. But I don't, I don't think that you should say five, five things per driver. My kids are 12 and 14. Yeah, they may not be supposed to be riding a four-wheeler, but it keeps them busy, it keeps them from doing things that they shouldn't be doing. And we are always there watching our kids, doing what they're doing, and keeping their interest in good things, not drugs, or not watching them. I think it's crap.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
On your, on the vehicles, and there's been some misunderstanding. It's not that you can just have five vehicles. If you have a garage and you have 10 vehicles in the garage, that's not considered here. It's just vehicles on the, on the outside of the property. No more, if you have five, that's what the code says. It's not about that you can only have five vehicles, which could be two motorcycles and three cars.
Yeah.
But it's just the amount of vehicles out on the property.
Okay.
If you have a garage or can secure them somewhere, yeah, you're allowed to have them on the property.
Okay. All right.
So they're in a covered area.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So I'm, I'm like, I was so upset.
Yeah.
Because I'm like, this is ridiculous.
Yeah, and it is, but it's, the problem you have is, is when you have a property owner that's got 10 vehicles, they're all out in his yard and everywhere else, and you have neighbors, that it just, it gets to be like a junkyard. And then surrounding properties, and I'm not saying that about your property, but it's just so you understand, you just, you can't just have five vehicles. It's just five vehicles outside at one time. If you have a garage with, with all the motorcycles or a cupboard, something like that, you can still have that.
Okay.
And that was a misunderstanding, I think, and we, that's why we put this off so long, trying to get this code right, you know? So, and that, just so I want to clarify that for everybody.
Okay. Well, I know that St. Genevieve's small and they only require a certain, like, the garage to be a certain size, especially in the historical district, which I love history, I love the old houses, I have an old house. But in order to have a garage, you can only have it so big, you know, in this area. So...
It's all the size of the lot.
Right.
It's not a function of the size of the garage. You can only build up so close to your property lines, so that kind of restricts the size.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a percentage of coverage of a lot that might restrict it, but if your lot's big enough, you can build as big as you want to build it.
Okay. So let's say if I have a trailer on one of the properties that I own in downtown, what about building a metal shed on it, though, or a garage?
That's an out, it's called an accessory structure.
Right.
And it needs to be accessory to a main structure.
Mm-hmm.
You can't just put up a storage unit on a residential building lot.
Okay.
There needs to be a residential, a rep...
She's got a house trailer on it, is what she's saying.
Well, then there would be accessory to that.
Okay.
So you could do that one.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sorry, but I just was like...
Well, I'm glad you came because it cleared some things up because that's, and that's what we want to be, is clear, but we got to, you know, it's...
Because there are a lot of men or women or just different people that hold on to some things, you know, because of something that's happened tragically or other things, you know? Parents dying, you know, they give a car, whatever.
You should be commended for showing up and asking that question.
Thank you. Yeah, there you go.
Anybody else in reference to this ordinance that we're looking at tonight? Anybody else have any public comments?
Well, I guess they need to know we're going to be discussing it at the time it comes up also.
Well, we're going to be...
You can vote.
We're going to vote on this ordinance tonight.
Right.
Yeah, we're going to be voting.
Hey, you want to hang around?
I have to go to work later.
Okay. But you're clear, though, with, it's not, you just can have five vehicles. You've got, there's some stipulations in the ordinance, and I wanted to make sure that was clear. Because there's a lot of people thinking that, whoa, I got five vehicles, I can only have five vehicles. No, if you have a garage or cover it, yeah, you can have more vehicles than that, you know, so.
But for the people who have 10 vehicles on their yard right now, please don't go and build a shed tomorrow. You need the proper permitting.
Right. Thank you.
And covering doesn't mean you can throw the cargo there.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And if any of those vehicles are not properly licensed, they should not be in your yard anyway. Correct?
Well, if you're working on something, you can't get a license unless it passes inspection.
Here's another thing. But there, in, in the ordinance, there is an amount of time.
We have a derelict. Derelict vehicles are considered a public nuisance. A derelict is defined by me as not being properly licensed or being able to move under its own power, but, you know, if you're working on something, that's, it's not...
Well, my husband says he's going to be working on it for the past 10 years, but like I said, you know, that's just something he holds on to. And our son is 12 and 15, and they may not work on to it until like another year, until he's 16, because it's going to end up being his car eventually, you know? But the whole point, he just, it's a work in progress. And that's what a lot of men...
Well, you just say progress.
I'd rather men be busy, work in progress versus doing other things or even kids. My son goes out and piddles with it. You know, it's something that they do versus have a, you know, go out and do drugs or go, you know, at least it's men or their sons, you know, fathers and sons. It's a, a connecting of something bonding. It's been a thing for years that people do this. It shouldn't just be violated by saying, oh, since it don't have license plates, I understand if they have 10 cars or whatever with no license plates. But like, we go on different rallies, so we have a vehicle that's for rallies. We have quite a few vehicles. Yes, we do. But, and we have a four-wheeler, a side-by-side, a dirt bike and whatever else. So that's what I'm saying, you know, I'm just like, I don't know, like, what your planning is for this, since it doesn't have a license plate. Like, if it doesn't have the right license plates, it's a '69 Mustang, we're not selling it, you know? We're not going to get a license that don't have a motor in it. So how are we supposed to have a license on it? I would like to know. Give me your opinion.
It needs to be enclosed.
Well, I'm, no, she said everything needs to have a license on it, though.
If it doesn't have a license, it's said it needs to be enclosed and stored.
Yeah, in storage, working on it, realistic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or any comments? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Takes us to the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us to old business. This will be the second reading of Bill Number 4290, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Sentinel Emergency Solutions, Arnold, Missouri, for the purchase of four turnout gear, an amount not to exceed $8,641.90.
Motion approved.
Second.
Would you like to have a roll call, though, please?
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Johnson.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4290 now becomes Ordinance 4220.
Thank you very much. Takes us to Bill Number 4291, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Sentinel Emergency Solutions, Arnold, Missouri, for the purchase of four MSA All-Terriff gas monitors, an amount not to exceed $7,147.20, and amending the rural fire fund budget, number 060.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4291 now becomes Ordinance 4221.
Thank you. Bill Number 4292, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Hoffcom, Kenneth, Missouri, for the purchase of one Rescue Jack, Number RJ3/4PTX, Four Point Deluxe Kit, an amount not to exceed $6,877, and amending the rural fire fund budget, number 060.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Make a roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4292 now becomes Ordinance 4222.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4293, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, authorizing approval of proposal contract with more fence for the installation of fence at Water Tower located on Progress Parkway, an amount not to exceed $12,500.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would you like to have a roll call, please?
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4293 now becomes Ordinance 4223.
Very good. Takes us to new business. And this is Bill Number 4294. Did everybody read the, the copy of the revised standard here? Does everybody understand it? Because this is the first reading of this.
Some issue has been raised as to whether one year is too long of a transitional period.
I don't think it is.
Okay. The comment that was made...
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve.
Wait a minute, I gotta read it.
Sorry.
Bill Number 4294, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 405, zoning regulations, Article 5, supplementary and special uses and regulations as set forth below.
First reading, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Jasper, you opposed?
Oh, any opposed?
Yes.
Wait a minute.
Was, could we not discuss this again?
You can't.
No.
Yeah.
We got a second reading.
Yeah, we can discuss it.
You should be discussing half the motion in a second. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, I guess my problem with it is, is, you know, we're clamping down on this primarily for one problem area. I find it hard to believe that we don't have the tools to go after that property with what we have. You know, other ordinances, like the weed ordinances and stuff, we have a evidence presented to the Board of Aldermen. The Board of Aldermen decide whether it is a nuisance or not through our discovery.
No, the ordinance on weed is defined as seven inches ago. Nothing comes from...
All right, okay, well, then on some of the property things, we've had evidence brought to us and we determined whether or not it was a nuisance.
Yes.
On situations like this, I think that it is our responsibility to also determine select properties as possible nuisances rather than creating something like this that affects everybody in the whole city. I've driven around most of the neighborhoods, counted vehicles. We've never heard a single thing or complaint, even in my neighborhood, on some of the people that have more than five licensed vehicles, boats, whatever. They're not presenting problems, even though they have more than what this ordinance is going to allow. If they're not presenting problems, why are we trying to fix a problem that's not there because of one property that we are having a problem with and are getting complaints on?
Because the ordinance doesn't allow you to take care of this problem. I've been fighting this, I fought this for 15 years, Joe. If we would have solved it, we would have solved it a long time ago.
If it's a continuing nuisance...
The problem is with the ordinance, it's not...
It's not a nuisance.
Because the ordinance, it's, if you have a licensed vehicle in your yard, you can have 100 of them.
Right.
As long as they're licensed.
Is it, is there any possible way at all to make an ordinance situational or have to, to have some sort of trial process or something like he's bringing up?
Any vehicle, like something, any, any property that has more than five license, or five licensed vehicles, that poses a problem. Not just, I mean, if, if one has six, but they're not causing any problem.
Well, that, that nature of a public nuisance is that it's a threat to public health and safety. So if you can't conclude that, then you can't declare a nuisance.
Right. Right. I agree to say five is a threat to...
No, we're not saying it's a threat. We're not declaring a public nuisance, we're just setting the standard by doing this, you would be. I'm not sat in one way or the other, it's just another something to enforce for me.
I just, I don't, I, I made my mind up the other night after talking to many people and I'm not in favor of it at all, so I'm going to vote against it.
I mean, what he's getting at here is there are residents that exceed this limit that do not cause a problem that is being dealt with the situation of this one problem, or this one property. Thank you. So he brought this to my attention, check it out, it's...
So there's, there's nothing, so you guys did the research and you drove around the whole, and there's, there's people, because I've been all over this town, and I've not seen very many cars like that.
It's not a problem. Couple in St. Patrick.
Not, there's no complaints about it.
It's, it's, it, like I said, he brought it to my attention, because I was certainly on board with this after last meeting, I was like, sign me up. But he brought it to my attention, did the research. It sucks to penalize them over a property across on the other side of town. the other side of town. And I, that's why, you know, if, if there was any way or possible to make this like a situational ordinance, I guess they don't, you can't do that. I would sue the law.
That's a problem, you can't do that.
Um...
So, that, so, I guess what we'll say is that, just because it's in this one area of town, the heck with all the neighbors over there, that, that, that it's troubling in all their property values that are going in and storing it. When I was next door to that, I'd be very mad about it.
I mean, that goes both, both ways, because we're, we're talking about this one property over here, I mean, sure, it's affecting the five, or neighboring properties, somebody ever that is, but we, we have other property owners that this is going to affect as well...
That aren't causing...
That aren't causing an issue.
I'd like to ask a question, do any of those properties have a garage that they have some of those cars in?
One's got a single car garage, but it, it has like lawn mowers and stuff in it.
So they got a place to put it if they choose.
Right. They just put one out of...
Yeah, well...
Seven vehicles.
Is a lawnmower considered a vehicle? Is it a riding one?
And just because the current...
It is, it is a rider.
Just because the current neighbors aren't complaining doesn't necessarily mean future neighbors might. I mean, I think we're trying to, to address a problem that might only have one instance of it being a problem right now that we are aware of.
Right.
And hope that then that helps curb this kind of problem in the future. And if nobody's, if, if you've got six cars between your yard and your street, and nobody's complaining, then, I mean, nobody's gonna be driving around looking for this, trying to enforce it.
That's exactly right, that's...
Until someone else does get and say, well, what about this one over here?
Well, that's possible, Joe.
If we have to apply it all, we have to apply it all.
Yeah.
That's why we make the rules.
That's the way, that's the rules, the way they're gonna be, you know. Yes, sir?
Hi.
Please identify yourself.
Claire, I want...
Not identify yourself.
Name? Rob Roth, I'm, I'm a resident town. I want clarification on something. If somebody's small dirt bike with a license on, is that considered a vehicle?
Have to be, technically, yes. Have to be.
I mean, sometimes they park it in the yard, sometimes they park it wherever, I mean, if it's something like that, don't they just put it in a shed or something like that, problem solved.
That's exactly what it is.
Exactly.
I think what we're after here, we, we all know what I'm...
Yeah. I know. Really, I've brought this complaint to the board more than once.
Yes. And I want to say something else, I've watched this person load a vehicle up on a trailer, haul it off, come back later, and it's licensed. How amazing is that?
Yeah, absolutely.
The whole yard's full of licensed vehicles, you don't drive none of them, but they're licensed.
And the licenses match the vehicles that are on.
Well, I'm not gonna go over there and check.
We check.
I'll get shocked.
They check.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, we have a few people make it hard for everybody.
Right.
Unfortunately, that's true.
That's right. And, and, and you know, we heard from some people that were against it, one person's against it, I'm sure we have one here that's for it, and so, I mean, it just, to me, I mean, it, we're living in the city, folks, this is the city. You know, I live, if you want, you want to have a bunch of stuff, drove me nuts when I lived in the county where there was no zoning, you could do what you wanted.
Yes.
But you know what, when you're in the city, it is our responsibility to protect the rights of every citizen, and I get that, but it's still, we gotta, we gotta look at the, we gotta, I, I just, it's unacceptable, and we gotta do something.
I know with this ordinance, there is going to be a few people affected the wrong way. Well, they're just gonna have to compensate.
Well, according to this, no more than five vehicles total, or one per resident licensed driver. So if there's seven people licensed in that household, there can be seven vehicles outside.
Absolutely. There's seven licensed drivers in there, there could be seven vehicles out there. That's exactly how that works.
That's what we changed last time.
Right.
So that's, that's good to go.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I think it's a very fair ordinance.
Have you guys been hearing from people? I mean, I've gotten phone calls.
We, we have specific house properties that are very close to us that we just, and it's not serving an issue, uh, but...
And those folks have talked to you about their concerns with this? Not just Facebook comments?
No, no, actually, I haven't had any Facebook comments on this.
He's back.
I have one more question. Uh, you say put it inside of a shelter, a garage?
Garage, yes.
A fence around it, does that count?
No.
No.
It's gotta be enclosed.
Enclosed.
Actually, that brings up a, a question for, that was, that was brought up to me, would a carport count? Or, like, uh, it's not an enclosed area, it'd just be under roof at a, like, an attached carport? This doesn't pertain to the, the properties up here.
No, I would think it'd have to be undercover, out of sight.
Yes.
That's the way it'd have to be, in a garage is the way I understand this. And I think David sent an email, because he couldn't be here tonight.
It said in a garage.
Yeah, it says it...
In a garage.
It says it does not include vehicles parked in a garage detached or attached, so that it could have a detached garage.
But it had, it just...
Yeah, it has to be a garage, so...
I believe we have a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have two nays, and one, two, three, four. For me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we did have that motion to vote, we already voted on it.
Yeah.
It's, we have two, is, is you still, Brian, you're against it, too? Yes or no?
Well, hold on, on what part?
Who are you gonna vote for?
I, I will vote against it.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna think on it, I mean, it's very possible that I could vote yes on the second.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
But I'm gonna vote no this, this vote, and I'm gonna do a little bit more discussing on it.
Five to two.
Five to two, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, any other Alderman communication? I'm glad it was brought up, that UTV deal, and I talked to one of the citizens, who was a city citizen, and I wanted to talk about this, about this going to two years. I think with this one-year deal, it's, it's really a pain, and I think we can keep better records of who's paying and who's not paying if we go to a two-year like the county. And I like to, I, and it's not about, because I want to bring it back to the board to make that decision.
Whether we, yeah, whether we have a one-year or a two-year permit, a permit is still a permit that can be revoked at any time.
Right.
Uh, it comes down to an enforcement issue, if, I mean, as far as the problems are concerned, so, um, I just, I feel that the two, going, matching the county with the two-year permit actually is, is gonna keep better track of it as well.
Believe it or not, I agree with the president, uh, last meeting, I said that I wanted to go to a one-year after the, um, feedback I got from the, um, from this event, I am amenable to going to a two-year like the county as well, so I've changed my stance on that.
And that, and that's hard to track that, but we'll have to be the, the rate will have to, we're gonna raise the rate on it, so we're gonna have to amend...
We'll amend the ordinance and we'll amend the rate.
Right. That's gonna follow that you at the next meeting.
We would make it effective January 1st or something, whatever.
Well, it's up to you. You can make it effective, whatever.
Well, as people renew, they can renew for two years.
Is that right, Pam?
It comes due January 1st of every year.
So it'd be, oh.
Yeah. Okay. Both way, we wouldn't sell any before January 1st, two-year.
I talked to one of the citizens who let his expire, and that's how I, I was thinking, and I said, well, did they, well, it's up to them to come in, because we, it's hard to keep track of that, I would imagine. Like the License Bureau, I get, when I, my, my tags are up, I get a renewal notice, but that's no burden on City Hall and the workers, so...
I think my, my big concern is the communication. If we're seeing them one time a year and reminding them of the rules, that's one time a year. If we're only seeing them two times a year, then I think we need to find other ways to communicate with folks and make sure they know, okay, is it, if you, if you register your UTV in March, do you renew in March, or everyone renews in January?
Pro-rated to January.
Okay, so everyone should have renewed in January, correct?
If they want to renew.
Right, if they're on this, if they're on the city streets right now, it's not a